...of spring light heights, ordinances and design standards when you designed this structure?
I did.
And is it designed in accordance with the provisions of those ordinances?
To the best of my knowledge it is, yes.
And is it your professional opinion that this does not create an unsafe or hazardous condition to pedestrians or motorists or anyone else who would visit this site whether as an invitee or other user?
That's correct. As I indicated, there are delineated pedestrian circulation areas with sidewalk. They control the pedestrian patterns from the parking lots or from the right-of-way into the site around the basin area and is protected by the guide rail.
And is there a maintenance program, Mr. Fruit, that you have to provide to the borough engineer for his review in connection with this proposed structure?
Yes, and that's taken directly from the NJDEP guidelines and the Best Management Practices Manual.
If a property owner follows the provisions of that maintenance plan which is required by the borough's ordinances and reviewed and approved by the borough engineer, should there be the type of issues that are indicated in this review letter?
Not my opinion.
Okay.
Provide testimony how you prevent vehicles from entering the basin from southbound traffic that goes to previous discussions on the basin. It's set back off the right-of-way. This portion of Route 71 has curving and is therefore generally protected from traveling public. Further protection is the guide rail that's provided around the basin.
2.20.
Maintenance access for the basin is invincible. It's a relatively shallow basin at three to four feet deep. Routine maintenance can be accomplished by a standard step ladder of the manual maintenance. It wouldn't require large machinery or anything of that nature for collection of litter and maintenance. So that would be in and out by a typical step ladder.
And for our benefit, what's the typical interval of frequency? Is it daily? Is it weekly? Is it monthly? Is it seasonally? What's the typical interval?
Certainly in the summer months or the regular months, as you have lawn maintenance, you'll have visual inspection of the basin. And then as needed, you'll have cleaning and maintenance of the basin if you do end up with litter there. Because you have the ability for the visual inspection on a, say, weekly basis throughout the summer, as you have lawn maintenance, you'll be able to determine the need for actual cleaning and maintenance of the system through the visual inspection.
And are there any unusual means, methods, or techniques that are required to maintain a basin such as the one you've proposed?
No, again, this is designed and maintenance is taken right out of the Best Management Practices from the state design standards.
So this meets the state design standards as it relates to New Jersey's Best Management Practices. Is that correct?
Yes, it does.
I don't think anybody is saying that it doesn't meet the requirements and that it's not going to work. But who's going to enforce the maintenance of it?
The property owner.
And if the property owner doesn't, the property owner will be issued a summons by the borough's owners. As with any other property maintenance. But what happens when, we see them from time to time, what happens when someone passes away or someone moves away and a home is not properly maintained? Same issue.
Provide testimony regarding the potential failure of this basin and the impact this would have on the proposed area. Again, as we've said before, this basin has been designed based upon the DDP standards, the Best Management Practice standards of the state in New Jersey. And there will be an operations and maintenance manual as taken from those design guidelines that's reviewed and approved by your borough engineer. So there's nothing to lead us to believe that there would be failure of the basin. We've indicated that there is a spillway from the basin that consistent with current drainage patterns directs runoff towards the Route 71 gutter system.
Thank you. Calling your attention to the last page, 2.22.
Type of vehicles used to excavate the basin. We've added a note consistent with the recommendation of Mr. May that it be a lightweight rubber tire excavator, which is typical of, again, the Best Management Practices for infiltration basins, to use lightweight vehicles.
2.23.
How we've noted the non-Logan Geo-Tex High Off Fielder fabric as requested by Mr. May's letter.
2.24.
Providing detail for the proposed residential lots, we discussed previously that we will provide state-specific lot build plans for each of those lots as they are coordinated with the homeowners and architects.
2.25.
The lighting plan has been modified by point-by-point lighting analysis throughout the proposed lot B and right-of-way.
2.26.
We have indicated compliant proposed signage on the proposed office building and details are provided.
2.27.
We have added a note. This goes to the sidewalk and curving along the frontage. A note has been added to the plan that a broken or cracked sidewalk will be replaced and repaired as part of the maintenance.
And as to 2.28, I understand that no recent design waivers are being requested. Is that correct?
Correct.
Item 3.1 stipulate as to the requirement review of the other multiple entities, items A through G inclusive?
Following any favorable approval, this board would make the necessary applications and stipulate that those are all conditions of approval to obtain this.
And as to item 3.1, Mr. Chairman, board members, I do have Ms. Golden, a licensed engineer, who will give a bit of testimony with regard to her expertise, which is traffic. 3.2 applicant stipulate as to items A, B, and C. I have no further questions of fruit.
Chairman, if I could just to bring it one handle, if I could ask if they considered or would consider a portion dedicated for future Highway 71 right-of-way or at least make the portion of the sidewalk on this subject property be located in the right-of-way. Right now, the current current line is actually on private property in that area. So I don't know.
Is that for us or for the state?
Well, we dedicate to save the future improvements. It's just something I think we should consider that we should provide for future widening or improvements on the highway. Right now, as I said, the property line goes east of curb line.
Yeah, I'm just wondering whether it's our place to, I could see us acquiring that it follows the curb line. You know, as far as dedication, I do that with our road, but I don't know that we do it with state.
And Mr. Chairman, that kind of falls in line with some of my concerns about the base location and future widening and safety maintenance for certain that you have to place in that. It makes it a little bit unhappy.
I would say we run that by DOT. I think it's fair to say that that's within the DOT's jurisdictions. Just don't want to go into a little further detail, but I did accompany her to a meeting with the DOT at the onset of this project a year ago to talk about the proposed road and the DOT permitting of that proposed road. And one of the questions we did directly ask the DOT was are there any plans for future improvements along 71? And their answer was no. They don't.
Let me ask you this, just from a legal standpoint. Why would you want a state highway curb to be on your private property? Wouldn't it be advantageous to just, you know, since you're going to be filing your map to grant that to the state and get it off your back? You know, as far as the liability goes?
Just take it like I would with the DOT. That's what I would say.
But you know what I'm saying.
I understand.
As a liability thing, I wouldn't want a corner of a state highway towing over my private property. If there's an accident or something, do you become liable? And a lot of that could be, you know, if the curb, let's say the curb gets in, it's on your property even though it's state-owned. I mean, if you were, if you're refiling the maps, it may make sense to just legally to, you know, dedicate that little piece to them and get.
We could sort of check with the DOT and, you know, reply back. I understand.
I'm just thinking. Yeah. I have a question. We're going to go back to this infiltration basin. It's an infiltration basin.
It is.
It's not a detention basin. There's no low-flow channel. It's not designed anymore, right? Do you have low channels?
They are. In this case, it's not because it's a flat bottom for infiltration. Low-flow channel would be as if you have water, that smaller flow passing through the basin to an outlet. So that's not relevant for this design, but they are still designed.
Without a low-flow channel, you put stone with perforated pipe underneath down the center so that it would flow properly or help the water get out?
It would, but again, that's not relevant to this because this is not a detention basin. So we don't have flow through the basin. We have flow into the basin and recharge. There's a different concept, basically.
So this is strictly infiltration, which means it's going to hold water for a while.
There's good soil, so it's going to hold water. It's going to recharge.
Yeah, I mean, if you get a downpour, you could have water in there for a while. If you get two, three feet of water in there, it's going to take a while to perk. Because there is no out.
About looking, I could look at the report and get the exact numbers on maybe.
No, but I know, but there is no out.
12 hours, yeah.
Because it's not a detention basin, it's an infiltration basin. There's no way to get that water out unless it goes through the outflow structure, right? Otherwise, it's designed to just perk.
This is correct. This is designed to perk. The reason there's no outflow structure is there's nowhere to outflow. There is no system in Route 71 to connect to that we could have a connection for an outflow structure. So we're bound to infiltrate here.
Yes, we can't let flow across every 71 down below.
There's nothing above that.
No, people wanted to flow across an highway and push it through townville with the river.
I mean, I think it's, a lot of infiltration basins still have outflows structures, right? I understand it may not be practical here, but a lot of them are designed with outflow structures and an emergency spill over.
There's a number of design combinations of infiltration and detention basins that combine both methodologies. In this case, with that, we would, ideally, we have a place to connect and it's more of a detention basin that has a positive outflow interstate system that's not presented to us. So, you know, this is.
I mean, a lot of these things, maybe they have a six, a four-inch square or, you know what I mean?
Absolutely.
I mean, to help get the water out.
But that pipe has to go somewhere.
I understand.
And that's the issue this property faces.
That's part of my concern with this system, is one of it is maintenance and two of it is going to have water in it for a while because it's strictly infiltration basin. So, I mean, one of the things, what if you left it exactly where it was? You made it out of HDP E-pipe and let it perk and put, you know, cover it in stone, put a foot of topsoil on top of it and let it, and then put grass.
I would say that in my opinion, you're going to end up with a larger, more expensive system that's more difficult to maintain because you don't have free access and you can find space entry certificates for those that are maintaining it.
In your experience, how many of these underground systems really fail?
How many above ground, I mean, the above ground systems aren't failing either, so it's.
But I could point at a lot of them, probably. It's just, it's just the nature of the beast. Things start growing in them, people don't pay attention to them, they're behind buildings at times, they don't work properly.
I hear your comments and I think I respectfully disagree a little bit because the out-of-sight, out-of-mind comment that you made is more applicable to an underground system where it's easier to forget about it and not know that it's there, not maintain it, and have problems.
But in a situation like this, you would have water coming up out of some sort of an outflow, right? You'd know if it failed. The other ones, if it was, if it had an outflow into the storm drainage system, you would know then too because the whole water would just be going out if it was failed. But this, you'd wind up having, you'd have to have some, they'd come out of the clean ass.
I think we can all take judicial notice that given its location at the entrance to the development, it's fairly prominent and there's going to be a strong incentive on the property owner's part to not let it fail, to not neglect it, and to do what's required pursuant to the proposed maintenance plan.
With respect, you're right with this owner, but what about the next owner?
Can't speak.
I understand that, but we'd have to look at that.
Right. And your ordinances provide a mechanism if that next property owner doesn't do what this property owner is doing.
My solution would be to cut this up. You don't even have to do that. There, there, if the thing fails, it was under the parking lot, you got big headaches. Put it where it is right now. It's a lot easier to expose than in the parking.
You put it on the front, it's the same, you could still have a tow way up to the other.
Well, that has to be, but.
We have one more witness, Mr. Chairman.
Before, before, first.
Are we through with the engineer? There's other.
You have questions?
Yeah, questions about landscaping, because that's my.
I think we should do that now. We're all done.
Is a proper expert to deal with those?
Landscaping.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
In terms of landscaping, your, your. Sheet 817. It doesn't address the existing landscaping that approaches the, I would say, the southwest areas, south and west of the existing structures over there. Your landscaping claim doesn't address.
We have a tree line there. We're showing that it's tree along that, remember you're looking. And just going back to A2, I built the southwest.
In my opinion, no. My opinion is in deplorable condition. And I'm assuming that this, our responsibility is the entire plot that you're dealing with.
Well, it's a subdivision aspect and there's a site plan. There's no site plan proposed for the bank.
Well, this is not exactly.
Well, you're.
It are affecting the site of the bank.
There are no improvements proposed to the bank.
Well, you're going to have.
There's significant changes to the driving.
There are significant changes to the driving conditions there. There absolutely are.
Well, those are site and circulation and pavement conditions.
It still affects that lot.
It affects the lot, but the lot exists and the building exists.
It affects the lot.
Right.
Okay, so then why can we not say that along that western edge there, which I have seen myself, it should be replanted? That buffer should be redone. You are affecting that.
The western edge being?
Right there, the southwestern edge.
Along the 150-foot property line that borders, I don't know, adjacent to all that road?
I've seen that.
I don't think that any of the site improvements are all located to the north of the bank as we create the cul-de-sac. There are no site improvements on that area. We're not affecting that buffer at all. We're not affecting the visual presentation there.
I disagree. You're putting a new garbage area there. You're going to landscape that. That's going to be new. And then you're going to look at that southwestern bench, which is right there. It's not that far from it. And it's not going to look as nice. I don't understand why you wouldn't continue that down there. I also don't understand why we wouldn't landscape the front. If you're insisting on this infiltration basin, why we wouldn't landscape around the eastern edge of it as well around it? I'm not even saying it's all the way down between the building and that, but certainly should do around the front and perhaps even the back as an additional safety issue just to prevent children possibly from going up to it. If you're also talking about the landscaping, as I read the landscape plan, these are minimum size trees, minimum size plantings, two-gallon plantings, eight-foot trees. Why wouldn't we look to put something a little better in there?
Well, the sized plantings are typical of initial landscape design and they're also consistent with complying with all of the borough's requirements for size of, if you care about planting. And to sort of go through some of your comments one at a time, again, I think this particular 150-foot stretch of common property line on the west here is not visually impacted. The improvements that are proposed are well beyond the buffer area. The trash enclosure, at the request of your engineer, has been supplemented with some additional landscaping there.
And that's existing. That's not new, right?
It's not new, but it is deteriorating.
Right.
The trash on the southwest side is definitely deteriorating. I've driven through there, it's definitely deteriorating.
Chairman, I apologize, I just want to get to some, because in my opinion, you're correct. Because this, we're creating a new lot for this.
Absolutely.
But more importantly also, it's part and parcel of the entire tract. And the tract itself is becoming intensified, okay? And the purpose of a buffer is largely, in many respects, to buffer the residents from the effects of the automobiles, the lights, that kind of thing. So, I mean, we seem to be having an argument here and I think it's clear that that buffer area is part and parcel of the application and it's subject to your review.
All right, it is proposed Lot A, so obviously it's been affected. It's not Lot A in its current state. It has been affected. It's proposed Lot A. Therefore, in my opinion, you have to address the buffer.
Are there landscaping standards, Mr. McGill, of the ordinance for subdivisions?
There are buffer standards for all lots. And that's, I think, what would control that strip.
Between residential and commercial. The other thing too is, I mean, I think you, the point I'm trying to make is here we have the same owner, right? With a buffer that's deteriorating. That's become a maintenance issue. Now, we're trying to design something where we don't have these types of headaches. I'm going back to the detention basin. We're trying to design certain things where we won't have these types of headaches. And, you know, what is your, your solution to this is to have Joe go down and find them and have them replaced.
Oh, I don't think I've said that.
Well, it's the order. You said, enforce the ordinance.
Well, let's roll back a second. What's in the record that says the buffer is deteriorating? Are there any pictures? Is there any testimony? Would someone like to give some testimony? I'm not familiar with the condition. So, are you familiar with the condition, Mr. Fruit? Could you give some testimony as to the condition of that buffer, if you know?
I've seen that the buffer exists. What I don't know is the status of the approval that it granted that site plan, whether or not buffering was required at that time, what orders are in place when that site plan was approved.
Well, we certainly could get the information if we needed it.
Doesn't it have to comply, it doesn't have to comply to our current ordinance if this is a change?
Well, to the extent that it's already existing, okay, it would be difficult to make somebody take out.
Well, not change.
So you understand what I'm saying. It's already there, but, but it's the board's obligation to make sure that these buffers are adequate. And that's why the board, that's why the ordinance actually gives the board discretion to design a buffer in, you know, in any feature and require. I think the buffer ordinance itself requires the board to make sure the buffer is adequate, okay? Whatever that term may mean, in whatever circumstances the board may be dealing.
And sometimes it's less than 20 feet.
Sometimes.
The percentage of the ground.
And again, Mr., to your point, this is proposed Lot A. This essentially is a new lot area, correct?
Yeah.
Therefore, were that buffer, then that buffer should come into purview to be redone.
I agree.
Along with a fence. I mean, you can see the fence there is also deteriorating. But I'm trying to protect the buffer and get people screening so that as through cars come through, as lights come through, as noise is occurring, that buffer protects people from that.
This is a.
It doesn't exist.
That being one of the lots.
It most definitely does include that lot because you're moving that lot on, so that's included in this whole.
It is proposed lot.
This whole proposal. So it does move that buffer down.
I just, I just didn't want there to be much of an issue as to that because to me it's clear.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Seems like we were going back and forth on that issue.
I also, just going back to this basin. We're talking about a wood rail. Can you describe that wood rail for me and what's the thickness, what's the height above the pavement?
Before we leave that, I would just note that Lot 65 on which the bank exists appears to be reduced in intensity by becoming proposed Lot A. And it's not, it may be a new lot in terms of lines, but it's been an existing lot for decades with an existing structure, existing improvements, existing buffer, existing landscaping. And, you know, certainly we can work with the board and the board's professionals to provide some kind of freshening. But that's different than saying this is a de novo site plan with a proposed new structure that entitles the board to exact all-new landscaping. And that's, I'm sure that's not what your ordinances provide. And if we need to take a couple of minutes to recess, that's what we can. But I believe there's a reasonable compromise to it, I guess. I think that's the reason for compromise. Okay. Now, as to the details for the fencing.
Posten rail fence and we have the timber guide rail detail, sheet 13 in the lower left corner of the sheet, timber guide rail detail. Guide rail would be approximately 27 inches above grade, four-by-10 rail on an eight-by-eight post.
That's 27 inches high?
Twenty-seven inches.
Is this a standard post and rail fence?
It is, yes.
All right, so my question to you.
Lower left corner is the timber guide rail, not post and rail fence, timber guide rail in the lower left corner.
13, 18. There's two details I didn't want to get to. And it says four-inch by 10-inch rail. Is that correct?
Four by 10.
So if a car is approaching in the actual course of what, which is?
The posts are eight by eight.
Eight by eight.
Yeah, that's a non, obviously, an actual post is going to be seven and a half by seven and a half.
And if a car jumped a curve at that, kind of heading south on 71, car loses control and jumps the curve because this does jut out in front of the building, what is the likelihood of a car destroying that rail and going into that basin and damaging that basin as well? Seeing that for the curve as well.
That's a lot of subdivision made there. I'm not going to get into judging the rate of speed and angle and everything.
When I'm concerned about safety issues and the location of this basin, I'm concerned about safety issues, I'm concerned about maintenance issues, you know, and this is.
What I can, what I can say is that the, that guide rail would be guide rail as a standard, would be the guide rail design and it's.
Why wouldn't we employ a steel guide?
That's an aesthetic matter. If you prefer a steel guide rail there, put that in. I think it's an aesthetic issue. But the wooden guide rail serves the purpose of guiding the, you know.
I understand. I think that I'm concerned that this is. I understand, I think that, I'm concerned that this is only five foot in from the sidewalk, so if a car jumped that curve, and this is sticking out at least 30 feet, you know, 20 feet ahead of the building, so it's, you know, it could be an issue.
He's testified, Councilman, yes.
I understand what he's testified to, sir, I'm asking the question, I have a safety concern.
He's testified that it's safe and that it's properly designed in accordance with engineering, if it's not, ask your expert, he's answered that question, respectfully, he's answered that question. Ask your expert, he's here, ask him if it's inadequate. Ask him if it's inadequate.
I have safety concerns with the location of that basin. Thank you, he's testified.
Cross-examination, is the guard rail that's been designed by Mr. Frude inadequate?
I didn't say the guard rail was inadequate, I said I have safety concerns with the location of the basin.
And my question is, is the guard rail, the guide rail, as designed by Mr. Frude, inadequate? Does it not meet proper engineering standards?
Does meet proper engineering standards.
Thank you, sir.
But there are concerns with the safety. Location of the- Thank you. And I guess my other question would be, the landscaping, back to the landscaping, why would we not, if this is here, and you're telling me it's an acceptable standard, why would we not landscape around the front of it?
There's a site triangle at that point, we could landscape, it would have to, it would be a low-level landscaping, less than 30 inches. If that was the board's preference, that could be added as long as it was less than 30 inches high. And it met the satisfaction of your engineer.
I have no problem.
Back to the buffer on the southwest.
I have no problem providing supplemental buffering plan.
Supplemental buffer plan?
Yes.
I guess we have to see the plan. That's all.
Anybody else got a question?
Well, I wonder if you want the lighting, and just, to the engineer to describe, will the lighting be consistent with the existing lighting that is currently on the, on the developed property?
I would say no.
The plan doesn't indicate, the lighting, lighting plan line of 17 doesn't appear to indicate very much in terms of where the lighting is, how it exists currently on the, outboard the bank lot, and will it be consistent with what exists there now, what is going in?
The bank lighting is not proposed to be changed, the focus of this application is the new road, or that's not?
The question was, was it consistent with the lighting?
Is what, maybe, is what consistent?
Is the lighting that is going to be included in the parking lot of the newly-created lots consistent with the lighting that already exists on the lot before the bank lot?
Well, it's going to have newer downward focus fixtures, they're going to provide illumination levels within the parking lot, and those illumination numbers have been provided for your engineer to review, in my opinion, that they provide appropriate illumination for safe movements in and out of the parking lot.
So, they could be completely different in design, is what you, my answer was, my question was, are they consistent? And they could be completely different than exist on the property now.
Consistent, you're looking for consistent aesthetics, consistent illumination levels?
Yeah, that, I know you're going to meet all of the requirements in terms of the aesthetics.
They could be designed to be consistent, this isn't, we specified here, new fixture, board's preference to have something that matches the, what would be the lot on the opposite side of the new street, we can do that. Street lighting would be, municipal lighting, that would be 100% up to the discretion of the board, or the municipality as to what their standard streetlight is. Private parking lot lights, if you would prefer that those to match the opposite side of the road, the bank.
And if the, if the proposed road is, is never accepted by the borough, who will maintain it?
It's proposed to be, this is a, this would be a public right of way, this would clearly be a public right of way. It's designed to borough standard. Does the town have to-
Yeah, I think the town has discretion as to whether or not the town accepts that definition, is that correct?
The board can condition, certainly can condition the approval on whether or not the borough accepts it as a public road.
What happens if you don't accept it?
It's private road.
It's private road, and a landowner must maintain it, must maintain it, must plow it, must light it. I'm, I'm, you know, I'm just sitting here going, what if they don't, if they don't take it, if we, it's the property owner's responsibility to have it as a private road, and keep it, and provide easements to eventual property, if it's all.
That's correct.
Which property owner is going to maintain it, is going to be formed?
That's, and that's what should be, if this moves forward, it is approved, we need to be, put that into, into a stipulation. I mean, this is a very, this is a very unusual, except for, the only time we've ever encountered this before us is when we had condominiums, that there would be private roads.
Yeah, but this road, this actually is still remaining part of what the property owner owns, the only thing they're selling off is two houses.
No, 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 no.
No, they dedicate it.
They, they, they're putting in all the improvements, and then they're going to attempt to dedicate it to the town, and the town doesn't accept it, if the town doesn't accept it, it's the property owner, so it's a guarantee, and I'm just suggesting that that's a provision that, if this is, if there's a approval, that it be clearly identified as a proposal.
I have no problem, Mr. McGill, stipulating that if the borough does not accept the road, then at such time as the applicant seeks to convey title to any of the lots to third-party owners, anybody's differently entitled, that it would be subject to a review by the borough attorney of appropriate easements, you know, cross-access easements, and a maintenance agreement for the private maintenance of this road.
Yeah, I mean, you could do that, or one of the owners could be saddled with the maintenance, I don't know, that's up to you, but-
I have a particular idea as to that, but I, I think that issue would not ripen until, I mean, right now, there's unity of ownership, there's no, there's no proposed sale or anything like that, so that issue has not yet ripened. So, at the time the issue ripens, which would be a proposed sale, if you're selling a house, you need a C of O, if you're selling a building, you need a C of O, if you're selling an existing building, you need a transfer permit, that would then trigger the review by the borough attorney of these respective instruments, and stipulate us to that, that's reasonable.
Yeah, I'd be inclined to leave it up to you now to tell us, I mean, right now, at this point in time, give us the proposal, the way you want to handle it, just as long as it gets handled, just as long as it gets handled if the town doesn't take care of it, so, I mean, I don't know if easements are the way to go with it, I haven't thought it through, I have to think about it, I don't think an association would be warranted.
Again, there's no intention to keep this private, sometimes developers come in, they propose a private road, this is proposed to be public, so unless there's some indication from the borough that the borough wouldn't accept it, I think-
I realize that we may be dealing with a contingency that we may never have to deal with.
It's a reasonable basis, you know-
So, you're saying when you're selling the property, you would have some kind of agreement with whom, you have some kind of covenants?
Yeah, we have to file some kind of a restrictive covenant and maintenance agreement, which I've done for private clients, relating to private roads.
On all-
I certainly have templates for those, but it seems to be very premature, when the applicant's intent is clearly to dedicate it as a public road.
The fact that, that the safety issues that have been raised by members of this board give light to the fact that those safety issues may carry over to the town council, and the fact that those safety issues exist may clearly suggest to them that they not accept it, because they may be become liable for those safety issues that have been raised by members of this board, but that's, that's why I raised the question.
That's a fair statement. Do you have a question? Georgia?
Right now, we have one owner, but supposing somebody, they sell one of these residential, I know you were talking about the degree, but it would be possible to have theoretically three owners of this road?
Yeah, well, it would be subject to the, to an agreement that would be attached to deeds, there would be covenants that they all would need to maintain this roadway, I don't know how you apportion it between residence and commercial, given, given the relative use of the roadway, that's why I suggested maybe just the commercial properties would take care of the roadway, in that sense, but I haven't thought it out, it can be done, it can, it can be done, and we would have to condition a resolution that if the governing body does not accept the roadway, then these types of situations would have to be made, and that's why I said I would leave it up to the applicant to tell me, tell us, what they propose as far as maintaining it, because I don't really want to fashion the agreement, because right now, they are the owner of all property, so they can say, this is how we're going to do it, and then people who take the title from them would be subject to that agreement, so, and that's why I hesitate to say we should do X or Y, because there's many different ways to do things.
I think we should know before we-
I don't, I don't think we really need, I'm not concerned with the actual specifics of it, as long as there's an agreement that it will be maintained by those owners, one of the owners, all the owners, it doesn't matter, as long as somebody's obligated to take care of that, and that, and how that's worked out, I mean, sitting here right now, I think is, you know, the definitive answer as to how we should do it, or how we should suggest that they do it, but we can put it in a resolution in broad enough terms that it will get done.
Can I just, one other question, I'm still on the, where this property's going into, the actual lot line of this lot, what is that, B?
That's B.
That is actually, even though that's theoretically a commercial lot, it is, even now, it's going into the residential, I know it's really going the buffer, but the actual lot line is going into the, correct, right, the residential section? This lies, is this actually the actual property line for that lot, is that actually going into the R5 zone?
Yes, yes, that is in the residential area.
Would you please remain standing to raise your right hand, thank you. You solemnly swear that the testimony that you shall give should be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much, would you please state your name for the record and spell your last name?
Elizabeth Dolan, D-O-L-A-N.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Dolan, do you possess any licenses from the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I have a licensed professional engineer registered in New Jersey, as well as Pennsylvania, Delaware, and New York.
And do you have an area of expertise within engineering?
Yes, I have a bachelor of science degree in civil engineering from Rutgers University, and for the past 27 years, I've focused in the areas of traffic and transportation engineering. I'm currently a principal with Dolan and Dean Consulting in Martinsville, New Jersey.
Have you given testimony with regard to, expert testimony with regard to traffic issues before planning and zoning boards previously in your career?
Yes, I have, in over 200 municipalities, and I know I was here approximately 15 years ago, I've also had the opportunity to review traffic, parking, and DOT aspects of applications on behalf of zoning and planning boards in New Jersey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, board members. Ms. Dolan, I'm wondering if you can orient the board to any issues on this site as it relates to Route 71.
Certainly, Route 71 is, of course, under NJDOT's jurisdiction, so when the project was first kicked off, the applicant, Mr. Frude, had contacted me to assess the NJDOT permitting issues, because we do have a number of lots here, and we would be replacing the existing driveways with a new street, so we did have a meeting with NJDOT, we reviewed what's called property conformance as outlined in the access code, we determined that the combination of the various lots are conforming based on DOT's criteria, which basically means that there's no trip limit on this new driveway. We confirmed with NJDOT that the design of this new roadway would be permissible, it would likely be subject to a street application, which would be classified as a minor application based on the new trip generation associated with the uses, as well as the trips associated with the existing bank, we are considered a low-volume redevelopment, and therefore classify, or qualify for the lowest level of permitting. Associated with the access and street permit, we also have to perform NJDOT consolidation and subdivision permits, it's all handled at the same time, and it's basically administrative, but the design, as Mr. Frude had pointed out, is an improvement over existing conditions, because we will meet NJDOT's 100-foot corner clearance, that's the distance between the curb return of the intersection and the curb return of this new street, so basically, we are bringing the existing driveways into conformance with the design standards required by NJDOT, and we'd be consolidating the number of access points, DOT did indicate that there would be deed restrictions, which would prohibit any additional driveways beyond this new street for the combination of lots, and certainly, that's something that the applicant is willing to accept. So, we have initiated that process, but again, as Mr. Frude said, subject to a favorable vote here, we would then advance that application, and I believe, based on my experience with DOT, as well as a specific pre-application meeting with them on this project, that we would have a successful approval at the state level as well.
But I have no further questions this time, I'm direct of Ms. Dolan.
This is our, the questions I would have would relate to the emergency vehicles and the utility vehicles, and utilized by the borough, something like that, is this actually, are we a-
I think Mr. Frude did address that, because it was a request of your professional, and in the latest revised site plan, Mr. Frude provided a circulation diagram showing how a larger wheel-based vehicle could maneuver through this, this property and the new street, so that was something submitted in the latest plan set, and that would also be something we have to satisfy at the state level, that geometry would have to be sufficient for larger wheel-based vehicles to get in and out of the new street.
Mr. Chairman, may it, Mr. Payne has been to a fire marshal, and currently reviewing.
I guess, that's fine, I'm not getting any answers to whether a garbage truck with a plow on it could make a turnaround and then pull it.
The owner's weekly show is a open-air truck, there are no parks for other similar vehicles shown on the regular.
Page 15.
I've got page 15, and it shows that the fire, the fire truck's got to back up, the fire truck's got to back up, it's got to enter and then back up, make sure it works. Got to answer that, I want to answer my question.
Anyone else have any questions? I guess the board, no one else has any questions, is there anybody in the audience that has any questions, as this engineer just mentioned, strictly question? Thank you, thank you, Ms. Dolan, may I recall Mr. Frude with regard to the emergency vehicles and the roadblock?
Mr. Frude, you're still under oath.
Yes, thank you. What I'm going to put on the E-zone now is a copy of Sheet 15 of 17, the Emergency Vehicle Circulation Plan. What we have identified here in the upper-left corner is the typical turning radius, 42.6 feet. Outer radius, side view of the 47.5-foot emergency vehicle that was utilized, and the path of that through the commercial portions of the property. What it shows here is entrance from Route 71, passes across the entire front of the bank property, and then out onto all that road, access into the rear lot if necessary of the office building, and then in a K-turn type movement, being able to return out through the public right-of-way. As far as the cul-de-sac goes, typically, that is, that is all designed per the residential site improvement standards and the borough codes, so that is consistent with all of those standards and therefore means all of the necessary circulation requirements.
So a fire truck would be able to turn around in the cul-de-sac?
The cul-de-sac has a 40-foot radius. So this particular fire truck has a 42.6-foot outer radius. That, that's the swing path, I'm sorry. The, I believe the tire path would be 36.4, so again, that's consistent with our SIS, so.
I mean, that diagram, it was shown for garbage pickup, more than a...
No, no, this is an emergency vehicle.
No, I mean, I mean, the K-turn type thing is more for garbage pickup or...
I wouldn't necessarily expect that a ladder fire truck like this would need to respond there because they already have access on two sides. But if they did, this shows that they could enter in. Typically, with emergency vehicles, the important thing is to get there. And then returning, doing a K-turn type movement is not out of the question.
Thank you, Mr. Frude. Do you have any questions?
Well, no, it poses problems, but I believe there is no restrictions on the parking along, in that cul-de-sac. Any vehicle parked on the roadway that cul-de-sac could impede, significantly impede, an emergency vehicle. This plan appears to, that the emergency vehicle must do a K-turn in order to get out of it. I mean, I think about the imposition. Would it add to my suspicion that the council would look very significantly at accepting this route?
But the K-turn is after the emergency event?
I understand.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm just...
Right. And just, but just to be clear, just so our record's clear. If there were a car parked to the east of the residence there, the easterly residence in the easterly driveway, if there were a couple of cars parked on that northern line exactly where your finger is, would that in any way impede an emergency vehicle from accessing either one of those residences to provide emergency services?
No, the direct in would not be a problem to get in and get to those points. And again, this is residential site improvement standards, which is designed by the state and enforced by municipality, which stipulates the specific radius and turning movements within the cul-de-sac. If the borough specifically feels that parking should be limited on the cul-de-sac, that can be a, you know, a condition that the council can adopt.
And this is not a standard you've cooked up yourself or designed unilaterally or without any reference point. It meets state standards. Is that correct?
Correct.
It meets borough standards. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Further questions?
It meets minimum standards.
Thank you, Mr. Frude.
Thank you.
I have nothing further. Mr. Chairman, board members, applicants, press.
And there's one thing, and I do not say this in a prejudicial way, by any means, nor should anybody on this board really consider it with the approval of this. I guess you're aware that the town is thinking of rezoning this?
We are.
I think it was your applicant's request.
We had actually sought, actively sought a rezoning. This is certainly something that, you know, perhaps could have been avoided, but it hasn't happened over many, many years.
Right. And if something, if they, I understand it's been introduced.
I understand that, too.
Now, we, we're bound by the zoning that's current.
Yeah, so are we as the property owner.
We understand.
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure you're aware that if that does go through, you're going to be creating two non-conformal laws.
Well, that's, that's a decision, if it goes through, that's a decision that the applicant will have to reconcile in their minds.
I would assume maybe that's why they're not developing it immediately.
I can't tell you what the objection is.
I just want to make sure that the applicant was, I knew you were involved in it. I knew you had made requests, but I wanted to make sure that you understood that it was also introduced. And if that were the case...
Thank you.
You know, any alteration, well, I don't even, how would you... No, it would be bound by this zone, so they'd be able to build their houses within this zone.
Right.
Currents. Right, R5.
R5 standard.
Which is fine.
Right, right, right. We concur. Yes, sir.
Anyone else have any questions at this point?
Of the engineer or the, of the...
In general.
All right. Yes. Could you elaborate in terms of their, the existing lease in terms of length of lease relative to the bank? If that's a proper question?
I'm not sure it's relevant.
In terms of the proposal here, you've mentioned on a number of occasions, both all of your engineers, about this is a bank, this is a bank, this is a bank.
Yes.
And if you owned the bank, I wouldn't be asking a question. But in terms of this proposal that you're putting forth, you don't own the bank. And if the bank was to leave in the next 30 days, the information that you've provided may be different in terms of who is going to be occupying that one structure within this subdivision. And that's the reason for my question.
Okay. It's a fair question. And to answer the question, I would say that it's impossible to estimate that on the 31st day, that there wouldn't be another bank that would come a-knocking because this is a pretty nice location. Fair to say there's a fair amount of traffic between, you know, County Route 524 and State Highway 71. Or there might be some other use that was permitted. Or there might be another use that's not permitted that sought, that would then go to the zoning board. But either way, any successor user would be subject and bound by the development regulations of this borough. Right now, it's Central Jersey Bank.
Carney?
A division of Carney Federal Savings.
And if it were to change uses, it would have to come before us anyway, probably, right?
Not necessarily.
If it went from a bank, if it went from a bank to, say, a retail store?
Only the buffer, depends on how many parking parks dictating that property.
But do we know how long, what the term of the lease is?
I don't know what the term of the lease is.
Oh, okay, because we have a lot of ambiguity there. We've just got to...
I don't know what the answer is.
It's a 30-year lease.
Back in the day when I was the director, I may have known, but that's a few years ago.
Anybody else have any questions?
What that is though? We have the owner here.
I think it would be helpful. I mean, I really do. I mean, just in terms of that, to give us some degree of comfort as to what we've approved or what we may have, may or may not have, has relationship to the existing use that we're subject to. I mean, I would love to, I would love the answer, but I'm not, I know that we can't, I don't know that we can compare. I'm not, I'm not looking for a recompense, but I was, I was, I'll just have to weigh the response that I've received in terms of my decision.
You can make a fair inference from it.
Right.
You can make a fair inference from it.
Yeah.
Now, so we're not getting that information?
I don't have the answer.
Your client's...
I'm not calling my client to answer the question. It's not relevant. And respectfully, it's not relevant. We've gone to great lengths over the course of about three hours to review a site plan for permitted use and two lots that are oversized relative to those requirements. I think the applicant has been extremely thorough and extremely responsive to addressing Ford's questions. We understand that you don't like the basin. We know you wish there was something different, but your ordinance is permitted, and we propose it. Thank you.
Well, I don't find it, I don't find it, I don't find it so compelling that we should compel an answer. Call the owner, we could call the owner, demand an answer, but if you're good, Mr. Tully, then you probably should just move on.
I don't see the relevance. If the bank could turn Tully up next weekend, the building could be empty. Or it could be rented to somebody else, released to somebody else. The bank could walk out the door and pay whatever penalty they have to pay to leave the site. And so I don't see the relevance myself.
Yeah, I think we're at the end of the discussion, so we'll move on to the next one.
Okay, I guess at this point, you can ask the board.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll have to swear everybody in. They should come up here, and I'll swear them in, and they can make their statement.
Okay, you're going to open up to the public whether or not you'd like to make any statements, whether you're either for or against this application. If you do want to make a statement, please come up to the microphone so we can get it down, get it recorded, and give your name, your address. You'll be sworn in, and you can give your statement. So is there anybody in the audience at this point in time that's either for or against this application?
Sir, would you please raise your right hand?
Yes.
You solemnly, you solemnly swear that the testimony that you shall give should be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes.
Would you please state your name for the record and spell your last name?
It's Fred Manter, M-A-N-G-E-R, 61 Wicklow Road. Just in listening to everything tonight, we understand that we're sitting here with something that is beating on requirements. But they've also proposed in their discussion that the second portion, or that the piece with the development parts, the first part being the business section, it could be one, and then the second section being the R5 with the two lots in it. Where it looks to me as though the extension of the road into the cul-de-sac is extending into R5. So why not be a possibility, or could there be a possibility, that the approval of this tonight would be contingent upon the extension of that cul-de-sac being included when the homes are being reviewed for planning board? In other words, that would eliminate all of discussion about where the water's running off to from those two pieces back there. And it would also eliminate the discussion of how big that thing should be in order to make a turnaround. And it would make it so that the road itself, the town could weigh the fact that the road, if it cut off right here at B2, at the end of the B2 line, and you just tacked off the electric, the water, the gas, and everything else, you just have to off right there. And then at some point, when those two lots become proposed for development, then the cul-de-sac and all that other stuff is then addressed at that time. It would give these people the ability to move forward easily. It would be a succinct stop area, and the real question about where Joe May's coming from on the engineering side of the water runoff, and half a dozen other things would be pushed away. At that moment in time, it would give the council, it would give the planning board some moment in time in order to get their B3 plan put together. And then these people would have the ability to address the impact of B3 on them. And since they've spent so much time and so much money in being able to propose things to us here in Stream Lake Heights, and having been rebuffed so many times, some kind of lenience to the amount of expense that they would have to go through in order to propose their B3, whatever B3 provision they might take. So that, you know, it just makes it easier for them to move forward, helps us in this whole situation here tonight, and gets everything moving.
And it still keeps a little bit of privacy for you for a little bit longer.
It keeps privacy for what matters for a little longer. It addresses perhaps what B3 might actually appear. And the town would also have the option, too, of saying that that is not an acceptable roadway to, as Mr. Tully had said, is not an acceptable roadway yet for us to accept because it's only servicing your property on all sides.
I think that's a very, very good idea of doing it possibly as a phase one in the case.
Exactly.
I doubt if the applicant would be opposed to that because it would save them quite a bit of money.
I don't think the applicant intends to phase it. I think the applicant intends to construct the road and offer the lots for sale as soon as possible. Thank you, Mr. Major.
There has to be an economy also that would be running at my time.
Tough to come back to finish the second half. No economies of scale there?
No.
All right. But I appreciate the sentiment. It's a well-voiced out sentiment. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience to the for or against this application? Okay, let the record show that there's no one else in the board against this.
Raise your right hand. Thank you. You solemnly swear that the testimony that you shall give should be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God. Thank you very much. Would you please state your name for the record and spell your last name?
Ellen Manter, M-A-N-G-E-R, 61 Wicklow Road. I'm also the manager of Wicklow Manor. And this is our nightmare. This is why we have come out so big for us for B3. Understanding everything that the applicant has gone through and understanding that you really don't have a lot of wiggle room here. I would like to go on record to say that that road is coming seven feet to our fence behind which is our pool house and our pool. The dirt, the exhaust, the everything, it will impact us. The house is 10 feet from our fence line, 32 feet high. We all know what that is going to be for our backyards. We're not against construction. We're not against the development. But we would really like to go on record to say this is exactly why we want the B3. And we would hope that your endorsement of the B3 will help us with this. And I've spoken, yeah, a number of times, saying we hope that if the B3 does materialize and we're closer and closer, that we could have some kind of a reconsideration here and maybe get us a buffer. I understand there's no way for a buffer there, that house. There's no room between for anything. The buffer that is between, on the front portion that Mr. Tully did address, I, as manager, can attest that he's absolutely right. It is deplorable. Years ago, I don't know how it got to be that small of a buffer, this whole thing of 20 feet, 30 feet. Obviously, years ago, was there no ordinance then? I don't know. But it's a very short buffer, as you know, and as for the variance, it's in the program now. The trees that were originally put there and the ferns and the kind of Christmas tree kind things, they were nice in the beginning. How many years have they been? The walls have been leased. A lot of them dead. How many years have they been, the walls have been leaked, a lot of them dead. And the hardwood have grown amazingly hard. You know, all, our, our folks living in that building are afraid that they're gonna fall on them. We do need to have some kind of consideration for that buffer if you can arrange for that. We put a buffer on our side, which we would be glad to do, but all along this area, behind the pool and behind that house, we don't have room to put large-scale greenery there, which we would be happy to do. So it is a really, really big concern for us and we're hoping to get B three before we had to address this. But whatever you can do to, you know, that buffer will take that and, uh, we understand, but we don't have that. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I?
Yes.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony that you shall give should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you very much. Please state your name for the record and spell your last name.
Sharon Battau, B A T T E A U, Beverly Avenue. I think it's an interesting plan. Um, I think that residential is always good for a borough of our size, and I think it's better for residential property values. And they comply. Um, not for the B three in its current state. I don't think that we've had time enough to investigate, investigate all the other alternatives. And I think it's an interesting plan, and I think you should consider it. Because, uh, otherwise, what are we going to have? Blocks and blocks of office buildings. I think the mix is very interesting here. You know, residential is good, it's good for the school where, uh, apparently, um, enrollment is down, could be possible. Uh, Oceanside Court is a great thing. And, um, you know, I, I think I'm for, I, I think it's good for us, rather than just putting more pavement down there instead.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in this board?
Wes Paul? Let the record show if there are any.
Tell me, I wonder whether you want any discussion or, or, or a motion?
In terms of the previous application, uh, I'm not sure when, but I think it was twenty years, I think it was approximately twenty years ago. My recommendation would be that we should review that particular application prior to us moving forward with this application. And that would be my recommendation to the rest of the board, that we research that application to find out what it required and how it had been met and what was necessary.
This is the bank application?
This is the, I believe there was an application, whether it was before this board or before the Board of Adjustment, I don't know.
With the bank?
With the bank application, when they built the bank.
And what, that, and we do that for why?
I believe that there may have been certain, uh, requirements within that that aren't met with this, this application. That is my opinion. And we've mentioned it on tour date during the discussion here tonight, that we don't know what was in it. The, Mr. May indicated he didn't know what was in it, and the applicant indicated he didn't know what was in it. I believe the applicant engineer indicated he didn't know what was in it. Because of that, my recommendation to the rest of the board would be to defer this, to defer tonight until we've had a chance to review that application and its, and its restrictions and ordinance and, and move this into the next meeting.
Would you suggest we record?
That's a recommend-
He's making a motion that would carry-
I'm not making a motion. I'm talking, I'm, it's, you're talking about discussion. I'm bringing it up as a point of discussion. If there's other points of view, okay, relative to that, I'd love to hear it. That's what I'm, that's why I, that's what you said about discussion. I'm not, I'm not at this moment making, making a motion, but I want to hear. I'd like to hear from other members of the board concerning that, just, we're just discussing that issue.
Okay, everybody understand what he's saying? Whether we're gonna be in conflict with anything that is required, since it is, we determined that the bank is for this.
Yes. But do we have a resolution? Do we have a file? Do we have something to review?
There, there should be, the site-
There should be something.
It's, how old is the bank? It's no more than maybe twenty years.
Probably mid-eighties.
Mid-eighties. So we should, you know, it was twenties, I'd worry about it. We should be fine with the eight.
所以我的建议是 board 考虑一下你的决定是否合适
Well, yeah, and I, I think, yeah, at one point there was a request for supplemental buffer and plan and any of that.
So that means-
Buffering thing, pavement plan, um, additional plant that you talked about. It may give, uh, you know, depending on which preference, I, I know that it is a major concern. Perhaps I may revisit it, perhaps it may not be.
What was that?
Basin location or-
That's a definite safety concern.
Um, you know, at, at, at a minimum, I always feel more confident when the board has a ninety-nine percent that plan in place instead of a eighty-eight percent or a nine percent that plan.
Joe, can we require or ask for, this might be ridiculous, but a rendering of this potential infiltration system? In other words, we're looking at it conceptually? Just to get a better kind of computer-generated model as to what the final, with the fencing around it? Just to get some idea of what this thing might look like? I mean, I've seen them before, I know what they look like.
Yeah, uh, that's what the applicant had to mean.
I understand that, this is something that, if we're gonna go back and do this again-
It's my recommendation that board they consider alternative, uh, have to consider alternative methods.
Could we also require a maintenance plan to be filed with the board concerning this?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, but you said you're getting enforcement.
In, in, in theory, and if I may, George, acting as the code of course of zoning officer, in theory, it works great here. In reality, they don't work. The maintenance plans do not work.
Unless somebody comes up every year and says, hey, go, go check out because they didn't clean that basin. So then you gotta go issue a summons or, or-
I thought they were going to file-
Well, we, we have a major plan.
Yeah, the one is fine.
Right, okay.
Meets your requirements.
I mean, there are concerns about-
Thank you.
The existing proper condition now. So, I-
You know, just, just to the record, the board has heard a lot of, I've been on this board for probably over twenty years. Heard a lot of applications. We've seen a lot of maintenance plans. We've seen a lot of things. Part of our obligation to this town is to make sure that we develop something that is maintenance-free as possible. Because ownerships change, things change. Look at Commerce Bank, to be an example. They were gonna be here forever. They, they insisted on certain things. Uh, three years later, it's, it's an F T D, okay? We've had situations where a lot of promises have been made. The enforcement isn't always as easy as, as it appears. I mean, I could file a hundred plans, whether or not they're carried out, could be shame on us, could be shame on you. So all we're trying to do is develop, try to come up with something that has the least, the least amount of problems.
And the applicant reconciles those wishes with its rights, which include the right to do cost evaluation.
I understand your rights. This is more of a request than, than a mandate. And I, I want you to let, I think I'm speaking for the board, if I'm not, they speak up. We're, we're asking for a couple of simple things that would make it, make us a lot, a lot, make us feel a lot easier about it. And if the basin can remain the same, size and everything, we're just asking you to, to, to put, put in H P E pipes, which isn't that expensive, stone, covered over, you don't have a problem anymore. And those designs are also approved. They also go along with borough ordinances. And there are no ma, there are very few maintenance problems. So that's, that's really all we're asking, okay? Uh, I, I just wanna make that clear.
Mr. Chair?
Whether that depends whether we approve this or not, that with that being dependent on it? Uh, I don't know, because I can't read minds. Let's hope not.
Mr. Chairman?
But, you know, we can give and you can give. So, you know, what we're doing is we're, we're requesting, if you, if you don't wanna file that request, that's fine. But I think I'm speaking for the board when I said that.
Oh, uh, I think Mr. applicant said some information on the, uh, on the bank and the approvals. Your, the nineteen-
Well, no, I was just going to, I was just gonna say that at some point, the borough would have issued a certificate of occupancy for the bank to occupy the property. And I think it's fair to take judicial notice that the borough would not have issued that, at least not in my experience, land use law, unless each and every condition of the resolution of approval was complied with.
I don't think that's the point. The point is, is this application affecting that application in any way?
There may be restrictions of some sort on it, I don't know.
Was there a buffer on the site that there was supposed, I, I-
There's nothing supposed to maintain.
Let's look and see what that resolution satisfies. It's, it's not a question of whether or not it's, you know, I'm sure they've met all the standards, otherwise Joe wouldn't have given us that.
Or, or is-
Right. We're just saying, is this affecting in any way? We haven't looked at that, shame on us, Joe hasn't-
Does, does the borough maintain? No, I have not. Does the borough maintain those documents from about twenty-five years ago, you think?
We should have them forever, you know, and those things shouldn't change. It's an active site and we should have a site plan for it, and we should have an approval, and, and we should have a resolution. But if we don't, that is something else, but we should. And we probably do.
Well, I would make a motion that we table this until such time as the next meeting, and we find the previous approvals and see if there are any restrictions or what was originally planned for that.
And, and the suggestion that the engineer made about-
Supplemental buffer, pay-on plan and the base, and details on the basin.
And buffer.
I will second that, please.
Janine, what's that date?
August twenty-eighth.
No further notice required, Mr. Chairman?
No.
Kind of, uh, time requirements do we have to meet for that?
I'm sorry.
Time requirements? Mr. applicant, would you waive the time, time?
We'll stipulate to the waiving the time requirements through review.
In which the board has to act? Okay, thank you.
Through August twenty-ninth anyway.
August twenty-ninth is the date, Janine?
Our next meeting would be August twenty, twenty-eighth.
Right, so wait to the twenty-ninth, a day after.
Okay. That would be, uh, seven o'clock in this room. No further notice would be required.
Thank you.
Is that a motion?
It's a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please. One, please, yeah.
Mr. Capristo?
Yes.
Not bad, not bad.
Mr. Frankel, uh, Chief Counselor in Denver?
Yes.
Mr. Frankolino?
Yes.
Mr. Merrick, uh, Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Mrs. Islandberger?
Yes.
Mr. Hatton? Chairman Russo-Leece?
Yes.
See you in August, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, we have one thing to discuss before the minute clock for you won't be that long. But it has to do with a request from the council to review the sidewalks, ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, I may, um, as we called last year, according to S P A Google, the few lots around the community with regards to their sidewalk ordinance were lack thereof.
You know what, Joseph, just one second.
Sure, I'll be cool.
I'm coming back. We're being recalled.
All right, well, since Mr. Miller's a little worried, Janine's taking the time.
Let the record show that Mr. Merrick is now back. All right, the last bit order of business is sidewalks at the last meeting. The county requested us to look into, uh-
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll help you out here. We have been asked to review, uh, the ordinance of our ordinance requiring sidewalks for newly constructed homes in town or if there was any, or relaxed areas. And, uh, we had, um, discussed that we wanted to keep curbs in, but we were still discussing different thoughts on how we would, uh, enforce sidewalk construction in town. I have reviewed some surrounding communities, um, and I'll go through very quickly and simply what they say. Seager requires sidewalk. Whole township only requires curbs. Spring Lake requires sidewalk. Bradley Beach requires sidewalk. Manus Pond requires sidewalk. The Borough of Lake Bone, I wanted to get their ordinance is less than forthcoming on, clarity on that, so I didn't wanna just muddy the waters. But it, it appears to me that the majority of towns similar in size and location to the Brooklyn has to require sidewalk on any development on a public street.
Any new development?
No, any-
Any development?
Development or reconstruction. Um, if, if you tear down a house and you put down, put in a new house, they require sidewalk.
Does our ordinance require upon, um, if they say, uh, porch?
No.
It's just strictly-
Strictly new construction, residential construction.
Porch or standard, not, not in, like a major addition.
New or substantial, greater than fifty percent of the value, the aggregate value of the home before you did the work.
I don't know how far back it goes, but I think Spring Lake, outside of newly developed subdivisions, had sidewalks throughout the town, and I'm not sure if they, if the town itself made, took those sidewalks in. They used to be all, all slate, uh, or blue stone, whatever you would call it. And I don't know if the town did it or if it was required for building, when you built the house, but, uh, they've had full sidewalks as far as I know, as far back as I can remember. Except when they've done a subdivision, and as far as I know, when the subdivision was done, they required the builder to, or and/or the builder, the home to put inside all the curbs. That's my recollection of it.
As you recall, Chairman, um, the board was asked about potentially, talking about the revised applications to zoning boards or, you know, quick relief, and then there's discussion, well, you know, escrow still applies to professionals and, and, and the difficult that brings, um-
I think, I think the other concern, and this might be, uh, Mr. Big- I think, I think the other concern, and this might be a Mr. McGill question, if we no longer require sidewalks, what's to prevent people from ripping out sidewalks in front of their house? Why should I maintain a sidewalk that I'm not required to have?
Have the shovels down on it.
What would that do to sidewalks that the borough put in? It's, now, if it's in their right-of-way, that's one thing, right? I think the way the ordinance reads right now is even if it's in the borough's right-of-way, you have to maintain them as property.
Sidewalk, sidewalk be part of your maintenance requirement.
So, I mean, what's to prevent people from taking out sidewalks? The borough just put in three years?
I would take nothing unless it was subject to a condition of a resolution which they could, they could, it would take work to do that, nobody's going to do that. But unless it's conditioned in a resolution, I don't think anything would stop somebody from doing that.
Plus, I don't know how you defend it.
As far as the safety...
Go to court and say that the town really doesn't require sidewalks in there. So the borough's making me keep mine?
As far as the safety, Mr. Chairman, I highly recommend against making this ordinance. And I've heard different schools of thought, well, certain streets don't get the traffic of the street. Being in the borough every day, if you go on these streets where cell phone sidewalks aren't warranted, there's a lot of cussing traffic from people in this day and age. They're on their cell phones, they're not paying attention, and the kids are walking too far from their sidewalks. And I do understand that these neighborhoods have a certain character like that, but at the same time, sidewalks do promote safety for kids in neighborhoods. And it's a fact. And I've seen in my travels daily in town where these homes where only have sidewalks, they're coming out with a sidewalk next to them, where a little kid, four or five years old, playing with sidewalks, well, said, go out and have a sidewalk, and that's it. And you see a kid playing hopscotch or on the sidewalk. So, you know, that being said, as a zoning officer and code of portion, I see that aspect of where other people say, well, it's a sidewalk in order. Yeah, it's a sidewalk in order, but that child's playing on that sidewalk. And that's a safe area for him, he's not playing in the street. And that's, in my professional opinion, as an enforcement officer in town and an engineer, I think that if these folks are dead set against the exorbitant cost of put a sidewalk in, then they should come to the zoning board and go through the process.
Well, how many, of all the new homes that you put up, I mean, how many requests have you gotten?
It's my understanding that this has been precipitated from two homes, one in Jersey and one on sidewalk. And this was precipitated, my understanding, I have a plan that is clearly on the plan that it's be disrupted and somehow the developer, I've got the last camera from the owner, so when they got the temporary seal subject to sidewalks, they went crazy. So we'll sign the plan. Yeah, I know, but Michael Devell was going to conclude that, he didn't. But that's not the borough's problem.
Well, just, you know, I just, I'm more concerned, I don't want to prejudice anything. I'm just more concerned that how many instances have you had of people requesting no sidewalks after they built a new house or a new...
These are the only two that I've had an issue with.
Do we have a lot more?
And I believe the one precipitated the other because of proximity to health homes and neighborhood, so, for lack of a better word.
Because we know if it's a subdivision, they can request from, through us. We know that if they're getting a variance for any reason, they can request it through the Board of Adjustment. But if they have a totally conforming house, if they build it...
If they had a fully house and I specifically told them, told their engineer, because they scheduled plans to have a sidewalk, I had them put it on the plan. So they, it wasn't like that, the borough forgot to inform them. And besides, whether or not it's even on the plan, the first page of standing building says you are obligated to put curbs and sidewalks in.
Joe, Joe, but we're not talking about one application or one instance.
No.
We're talking about theoretically, in general, the question to the board is, should we maintain this plan? Your recommendation is that we continue it because of safety concerns. From a zoning aspect, I know it's a long time plan. It only takes a long time to get things done, it's the nature of the beast. It just is. And to, you really shouldn't, you know, move away from plans lightly because, you know, other people have been subject to them in the long run. But aside from the safety issue, it is what, you know, zoning is all about. It's a slow evolution. So I know it's not going to put sidewalks, you know, on every street tomorrow, but...
That ends up being, my thing is, when we talk about safety, if it's, if we're worrying about safety, then we should be saying, hey, let's put sidewalks everywhere so that the kids have a safe place to walk to school or whatever. But if we're going to put in, just limited to every time somebody builds a house, a new house, how many years are we going down the line before sidewalks are finally connected? You're talking a hundred years, maybe. You know, before every house is knocked down and rebuilt to connect the sidewalks. That's, that was my only issue when we talked about that last month.
And weren't these properties that we're talking about, the two issues, these two properties, weren't they corner properties?
No, one is.
Oh, one is. And I think the one that is, is the one that raised the issue.
Yeah, I mean, the town...
Yeah, I think we should stay also, I mean, we should stay with the president.
The borough actively produces grants at every opportunity to improve our schools, our safe ways of schools, our safe way to rent the house. Our last DOT application was to install sidewalks on Mercer and to improve the control of the, we're going to improve some sidewalk improvements on Colosseum.
And Park, you just did, right?
Yeah, and Park was just done. So every year, at every opportunity, the borough does try to improve our sidewalk network in town. And we all know that summertime, there's a lot of kid traffic in town, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic in town. And I think we've proved this state force.
And I think curbs are a dead issue, right?
Curbs, absolutely.
Curbs present the road edges and...
Protect road edges, length of road, dramatically reduce without curbs.
Right, I understand. Hurry.
I would make a motion that we recommend to the council that the current policy about curbs in the downtown be continued.
I agree.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
We'll do it in the form of a...
A motion.
Yeah. You seconded, Janine Vorto?
Mr. Capristo?
Yes.
Councilman Diver?
Yes.
Mr. Frankalino?
Yes.
Mr. Merrick?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Tully?
Yes.
Mrs. Islandberger?
Yes.
Mr. Hackett?
No.
Chairman Rousseau-Leece?